I don't know, did you switch with me Ed? This one doesn't want to stand.
Thank you. Good evening, City Council. This item is Ordinance 2023-07. It's a recommendation from the Planning Commission. It comes to you as Resolution 2301. It's to rezon properties along Halk Road on the north side of Halk Road and east of Runyon Drive. Those properties are currently zoned general business and the applicant, the enclave apartment community has submitted an application to rezone those properties to planned unit development. And they've also submitted a preliminary site development plan. Both of these have been reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission. So just a little bit of detail, like I said, there are two parcels involved. Those are the two parcel numbers. One's 1.5 acres, one's 1.3. Collectively, they make up about 2.8 acres. Currently, general business proposed to be zoned planned unit development. The proposal is to construct two three-story, 14-unit buildings for a total of 28 units on the property. There'll also be, they'll also offer some limited covered parking like they do in the other apartments that they develop. There'll be 54 onsite parking spaces and the property is kind of on a corner. It's on Runyon Drive and Halk Road, but the access will be from Halk Road. There will not be any access off Runyon Drive. That's actually a privately owned street. Here's a map that shows the two parcels, parcel numbers, and the surrounding zoning designations. You can see it's zoned general industrial on some sides, general business, as well as on the corner PUD, that's where it sits, the existing enclave community. These, you probably can't see these, but I've highlighted the buildings. These just show the preliminary site and grading plans that were reviewed and approved by the Planning Commission as part of the application. And there's the proposed landscaping plan and just a rendering of the building. And the buildings will be just like the others there. I just want to add that these are just preliminary that have been approved by the Planning Commission. So if this is approved by City Council, ultimately, the plan will have to go back to the Planning Commission for final approval. So bear with me, I have to read this as part of the findings of the Planning Commission as far as the rezoning goes. So the Planning Commission considered the overall vision, character of the Halk Road area, determined that the Halk Road area is, as we saw on that map, a mix of industrial, commercial, office, and residential uses. The western area of Halk Road, industrial, office, and commercial. The eastern end, also industrial, commercial, office, and residential. And there are also some several what the Planning Commission defined as legacy land uses that actually predated zoning in that area. Hopefully, those will be redeveloped as time goes on. And this particular property also has a small stream that crosses through it that makes development a little more challenging. So that area was examined by the Steering Committee in the city when we were updating the comprehensive plan, that process a couple of years ago. We looked at the transitional nature of the land uses in that area that we saw on the map. And at that time, the Halk Road improvements were planned, they hadn't started yet. So we looked to those two things to come up with a future vision for that area. So, and all that being said, the Planning Commission determined that the addition of this multifamily housing and investment could be a positive and actually encourage further redevelopment in that area between Halk and Lovett. So here is a map, can't really see it that well, but of all the abutting properties within 200 feet that we notified of this meeting as well as the Planning Commission meeting. Just a little background, as far as this ordinance goes, the applicant met with the Planning Commission back in June of last year. They held a pre-application meeting with the Planning Commission just to discuss the process that they would have to go through if they wanted to submit to rezone the property. Ultimately, January 11th, the Planning Commission reviewed and approved the rezoning and the site plan that you just saw in January. And we took this to the Law Committee on January 24th. And the Planning Commission's recommendation is to approve, that's all the information I have. Jonathan Woker is here representing the owner, if you have any specific questions.
Are there any questions? Okay. Is there anyone here for this planning hearing, the public hearing for this? I don't, huh?
Besides the owners of the property.
Yeah, besides the owners, there's no one here. Did you guys want to say a few words? You're welcome to. We were just looking if anybody was wanting to.
Good evening, my name is Jonathan Woker. I'm a planner with McBride Del Clarion. I'm here representing Rookwood Properties and the Enclave Project. As Mr. Creach mentioned, this is an expansion of that project which has been very successful. They have very low occupancy or vacancy rates there today, so we're excited to have an opportunity to expand that. The rents will be between 1425 and 1975, so high-quality units, depending on the number of bedrooms that we would have. And we think the plan fits well with the topography of the site. It kind of steps down. We plan to develop that in two phases. So, Planning Commission recommended approval and we'll try and answer questions if you have it.
Did anyone on council have questions? I don't think so. Mr. Tankersley.
I just have one question regarding some of the small businesses there along Runyon Drive. Will your residents or tenants be able to look down over the hill onto those businesses? And if there going to be any type of disturbance?
So I don't believe the residents will be a disturbance to the businesses. There probably will be some visibility of that, and I think we can work through those details during the final plan.
Okay. Thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you so much for coming in. If no one else is here to be heard for the public hearing, I'm going to call that closed. And I'm going to ask everybody to please stand and we'll go ahead and call to order our council meeting. We're going to have a moment of silent prayer, and then we're going to follow that with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. Knight is going to lead us in both, but before we do this, I would like everyone to keep in mind Mayor Don Aftkin from Evendale, he was retired mayor. Keep his family in your thoughts and prayers this evening. He passed last Saturday. Thank you. Thank you, you can all be seated. Roll call.
Mr. Tankersley?
Here.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. Coulter?
Here.
Mr. Lovett?
Here.
Mrs. Knight?
Here.
Mr. Schmidt?
Here.
And Mr. Cook is absent with notice.
Thank you. Approval of the minutes from February 14th, regular council meeting? Mr. Coulter? Okay. I was just going to ask, is there any additions or corrections? Seeing none, the stand is written and distributed. We're going on to reports and communication. Mayor Hardman.
Thank you. Quickly, before we get into the fun part of the evening, I am reporting on our January Mayor's Court collections. Total was $11,406.90. The complete breakdown has been provided to our Clerk of Council and will be reported in the minutes. I am happy to report to you that the Northern Cincinnati Convention, I mean Northern Cincinnati Chamber of Commerce awarded us a wonderful community champion award at their annual banquet. And Jessica Miranda, our state representative, sent us a very nice congratulations for all of us on that achievement. So that was always nice to see the recognition on behalf of our state representatives. We had some good news today with regard to an OPWC grant. Some of you remember, we applied for some grant money for a Mostella Road project. We just did not make it by like the skin of our teeth. And so as a result of some reshuffling of the awarded grants, I think folks that just didn't do their projects or didn't need as much money, whatever the case may be, we have gone into the awarded category. Instead of a 60-40 split, it's going to be a 50-50 split because that's how much money they have left, but it's still about 800 and something thousand dollars. Nine, 917,000. So we were asking for 1.2, 917,000 for a very significant project, something that needs to be done. We are always happy to take other people's money to do it.
Yay.
So with that said, I am going to invite Ms. Hoppy and the chief up front to join me for a few swearing ins tonight.
It is always great when we get to do this and formally swear in wonderful people that are serving our residents through our fire service, and we have five of them that we're going to do tonight. That's why you all are here, right? You're not here because you wanted to see us up here. You're here to celebrate the achievements of your loved ones and your family members. So let's bring them on down here. We're going to start with Leah Thomas. Leah, come on down. Right on up here, you're the center of attention. Leah is a born and raised Cincinnatian. She's fresh to the fire service. She followed in her parents' footsteps by graduating from the University of Cincinnati with a bachelor's in public and community health in 2021. While in school and then during the application process for fire academies, she worked as a full-time nanny. That's probably really good for these folks back there. Leah graduated from the Great Oaks, it is, it's great. Leah graduated, and they're all agreeing, every one of them is shaking their head. Leah graduated from the Great Oaks Fire Academy as class president in August of 2022, followed by the start of her first part-time job with us here at the city of Sharonville as a firefighter and EMT. She is on track to continue her EMS certifications with the Cincinnati Fire Department Paramedic Program in 2023. Some of her passions include traveling to new places, spending time outdoors, participating in youth educational programs with her department, and anything involving her family, friends, and pit bull Josie Rue. Am I getting them all right? Is it Josie Rue? All right. Josie didn't make it tonight? All right, so who did make it? Introduce who's here.
Oh, my family. So my mom and Vince are here, as well as Hunter in the back there. They're in the very back.
They're here to be proud of you. Awesome. We're proud of you, we're glad to have you. If you will raise your right hand and repeat after me. Now, the other four of you, and I'm not telling you who's going to be last, but by the time we get to the fifth one, you've got to have this memorized, and I'm not going to give you the words. All right, you ready? I state your name.
I, Leah Thomas.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharonville.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my abilities.
I've got a ton of things on my hands, but congratulations, Leah, we're so proud of you. All right, don't go far because when we get all five, we will get a nice picture of everybody. All right, here's the next one. You're all thinking about number five. Stuart, come on down. Stuart Holiday, here he comes. Stuart and his wife are originally from Illinois. He joined the Air Force in 2012 and was stationed at Wright Patterson Airport Base. You could, yeah. Which is what brought his family to Ohio. While enlisted, he completed the fire academy and paramedic school at Sinclair Community College. Once his enlistment ended in 2018, he transferred to the Air National Guard where he continues to serve and started his career in the fire service as a firefighter, paramedic with the Pickwell Fire Department. In January of this year, he was offered the opportunity to come to us here in Sharonville, and he jumped at the opportunity because we are such a great and amazing community, right?
Excited.
All right, there you go. Say with a little more enthusiasm next time. Stuart and his wife reside near Ark, Ark, Arkham? Arkham, Ohio, with their three children, Colton, say hi, Colton, Carver, and Shelby. She's the cheerleader, right? Did I hear, you're the one that, yeah, all right. They spend as much time outdoors as possible, swimming, being on the lake, and taking care of their chickens and sheep, which will go really well with the donkeys. Somebody has donkeys and cows and, all right. So I know you've got your wife and your three kids. Anybody else here to cheer you on tonight?
No, that's it.
All right, that's pretty good enough. That's right. All right, let's get you sworn in. Raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Stuart Holiday.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharon.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter, paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter, paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, sir.
Thank you.
Stuart, come on over here. Exit left. Don't exit yet. All right. Number three, Jacob. Come on down. Shock?
Yes.
All right. Jacob Shock is a resident of Liberty Township, we won't hold that against him, and a graduate of Lakota East High School, we won't hold that up against him either. He comes from a long line of firefighters, including his mom, grandpa, dad, and stepdad. You've got a lot of legacy to live up to, young man. Jacob grew up feeling like his second home was a firehouse. While in fire school at Scarlet Oaks, he began working part-time here at the city of Sharonville and the Deerfield Township Fire Departments. And I know that we're your favorite, right? And will always be. He is currently enrolled in paramedic school at Cincinnati State, and he's expected to finish in August of this year in his free time, I don't know how he has any. He enjoys traveling and hiking with his girlfriend Sydney, and so far, his favorite trip has been to Mexico mainly because of the food. Jacob is passionate about his career and he looks forward to continuing the citizen to serve the citizens of Sharonville. Why are they laughing back there? Is there something they, I should know about, no?
Good friends.
Good friends, all right. Who do you got with you here to support you tonight?
I got a lot of people here. I got my grandparents, Mimi and Papal, my stepdad, my sister, my mom, my dad, my girlfriend, grandparents, and then her family actually that came out too.
That's awesome. That is awesome. We're glad you're here.
Oh, and I got my supporters from Deerfield Township also.
They're the ones that were laughing at you, I think.
Absolutely.
Yeah, all right, yeah. Is there something, I don't know, there's something we should probably know. All right, sir, raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Jacob Shock.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharonville.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter, paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter, paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Jacob.
Glad to have you, sir.
So like the next two are like, is it going to be me? Which one is it? Madison, you're next. You could blame the chief, he gave me the list. This is Madison Tam. Madison is a November 2022 graduate of the Cincinnati Fire Department Paramedic Program. Come over here. Come over here. Within a month of graduating, she obtained her paramedic certification, and prior to this, Madison attended the Butler Tech Fire Academy in Hamilton, Ohio. I think she's cheering over there. She has some relationship with them. Where she acquired her firefighter one and two and emergency medical technician training. In addition, she is a graduate of the Ohio Dominican University located in Columbus, Ohio, where she played collegiate soccer and earned a bachelor of science degree in exercise science. She is the oldest child of Scott and Lisa Tam, I've heard of them, and has two younger sisters, Mackenzie and Emerson. She currently resides in Westchester, Ohio with her significant other Brandon and their two cats, Toby and Charlie. In her free time, she enjoys traveling, taking pictures, and hanging out with her friends. And Madison is a lifelong resident of Ohio and is following in her father's footsteps as a civil servant for our great city here in Sharonville. I hired in as a part-time firefighter/emergency medical technician in April of two thousand twenty-one and then to a full-time firefighter/paramedic this past January. All right, who's here?
My grandparents, my parents, Brandon and his parents. All right there. Yep.
Look how happy they are. All right. And I'm not making you memorize it, so it makes it easier for you, right? I don't have to embarrass you. All right, raise your hand, repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Madison Tam.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
The United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharonville.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my abilities.
Congratulations, Madison. Jeremy is next. I think that does make five. This is Jeremy Smith, who was born and raised in Cincinnati and graduated from LaSalle High School before attending fire training in at Cincinnati State. He then graduated from paramedic school at Colrain Township Fire Department through Cincinnati State, and he began his career in the fire service as a part-time employee at both the city of Fairfield and the city of Oxford, where he remained until we hired him here at Sharonville. Jeremy and his wife Molly live in Harrison, Ohio, and they have two sons, Oliver and Easton. Who's here tonight, Jeremy?
Oliver and Easton, my wife, my sister-in-law, and my parents.
All right, congratulations. Are you ready?
I'm ready.
Did you get it all memorized?
Not even a little bit.
All right, raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jeremy Smith.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution.
That I will support the Constitution.
Of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
The Constitution and laws.
The Constitution and laws.
Of the state of Ohio.
Of the state of Ohio.
And the city of Sharonville.
And the city of Sharonville.
And that I will honestly and faithfully.
And I will honestly and faithfully.
Discharge the duties.
Discharge the duties.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
Of the office of firefighter/paramedic.
To which I have been appointed.
To which I have been appointed.
According to law.
According to law.
And to the best of my ability.
And to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, Jeremy. All right, so we're going to get, bring all five of you back up here. Come on in here. Let's get you all lined up right, nice and center in front of the seal here. Chief, Ms. Hoppy. Get in there. Squeeze, babe. All right, everybody smile pretty for the cameras. Bam, well, you guys can come on the center if you want. Center shot. All right, here's what's going to hap- I think, here's what's going to happen. I'm assuming Ms. Hop- Ms. Hoppy's in charge, not me. So, but I'm assuming what's going to happen at this point is we want all five of you, they, all these folks up here want to congratulate, so we're going to make a nice little reception line starting over there, so you can make your way down all these council members line. And then I guess we're going to take about five minutes so that you guys can get individual pictures up here with your family members and with your family before we start into the rest of our meeting. Oh, there's goodies too. So hey, there's goodies. You guys have probably already seen the table, right? Have you seen your favorites? So there's goodies. So we're going to take a couple of minutes of recess and before we get on with the rest of our meeting. So congratulations to all of you, and thank you all.
And that is next Wednesday morning is our annual employee appreciation breakfast. I hope that you all are planning to attend, or if you haven't, let Anna know you are. Do that so that we can have you there to celebrate the accomplishments of so many of our great employees. It is always a fun morning. Those of you out there, we hope that you can all come back and enjoy breakfast with us next Wednesday as well. So that is all I have.
Well, good evening again all, and thank you for letting the Sharonville Fire Department take over council chambers tonight. We very much appreciate that. Now I hear there's going to be some heckling if I go too long because there is cake and ice cream at the firehouse, so these guys will keep me in line. So this is our 2022 annual report. Actually, I want to start right off with the cover page. That is our new patch design for the Sharonville Fire Department. And a couple of crew members, Dan Runyon and Erica Marion, really took the lead on this. This is about the fourth patch change historically ever in the history of the fire department, and I think they did a really good job. We've gotten input from several about maintaining the tradition of the old patch and then putting that into, you know, a new patch, kind of that forward-looking. So you will be seeing that on our uniforms in the near future. Our organizational chart for the fire department, and this looks very familiar, similar to 2022, or excuse me, to the 2021 annual report with a couple of additions. You'll see there on the far left, the addition of our administrative assistant Samantha Wood. That would be filling the position that we previously had as a clerk. And then on the far right there are fire marshal. The name remains the same, Keith Becker, but as you all are aware, we did change his position to fire marshal, which more clearly defines what he actually does for our community. And then our EMS coordinator Wendy Walters. And we'll talk more here in a little bit about the community risk reduction and what Keith and Wendy are doing for us. So thank you all for your support of the Sharonville Fire Department that we were able to add to our organizational chart there a little bit. I think we have adequately met our five new candidates. I will breeze through that. I'm very excited to have all five of them on board. And just a reminder, three of these five are the grant positions that we received for three of the five. So many thanks to Lieutenant Scott Holland, and then Lieutenant Walt Cortez from the Police Department deserves a lot of thanks. Those two worked together on this grant, and we clearly were the beneficiaries. And then the other two of the five are filling positions that were left open from retirement. So we're very glad to have the five on board, and it was really nice bringing them all in together as a team. 2022, we had two more graduations from the Ohio Fire Executive Program. This Class 20 was a little bit unique in a couple of ways. This two and a half year program actually went three years for this group, thanks to COVID. And specifically, a little unique for the Sharonville Fire Department, in the fact that, a couple of our folks are going to leave me, I think, unique in the fact that this two and a half year program with this group went for three years, thanks to COVID. So they got started. COVID came around, they had to take about a six-month pause, and then they got moving again. So Lieutenant Amy Nutley and Battalion Chief Jason Robertson both graduated in 2022, and Lieutenant Tony Smith was accepted into the program, so he will be starting in, I believe, May of this year. So we're excited to continue that on for our people. The next couple of slides, I want to talk about our special teams and really kind of our county assets here that we have available to us. We continue to have about five members on the Hamilton County Urban Search and Rescue Team, so that is, that's a county asset that is available to Sharonville and then all subdivisions within the county should we need any additional help. They had a couple of major responses in 2022, one of which was a trench collapse in Crosby Township, and then they did assist the City of Cincinnati with a critical missing in Evanston mid to late 2022. We also continue to have Lieutenant Thomas and Lieutenant Holland on the Ohio Task Force One team. That is the federal resource. They were, as you may recall, were in here talking about their response to the floods in Kentucky was probably their largest detail. Lieutenant Holland and Thomas did both successfully pass their water rescue testing in 2022, so they can continue for another year at least. So very glad to have those folks on these special teams. That is a lot of extra training off, you know, during non-work hours, and obviously they're able to bring that back to the fire department. And we have, you know, those highly trained people not only to work for us, but to help do some of the training within the fire department. The next special team, or the, excuse me, county asset I want to talk about is the Greater Cincinnati Hazmat Unit. As many as you know that the physical location of that building is in Sharonville, it's what used to be our firehouse on Crescentville Road. And Battalion Chief Jason Robertson is a member of the hazardous material team. So we continue to grow that relationship, and that does allow these additional resources, not only in terms of vehicles, but more importantly, the additional resources of the people that respond with this unit. So, you know, anywhere from, you know, additional hazmat technicians all the way up to chemists with a whole bunch of PhDs behind their names. So it is very important that we, that we stay close with this team and continue that relationship. I do want to pause here just a minute as we're talking about Greater Cincinnati Hazmat. I've had several council people and members of administration and council, I know that you have had constituents ask you about the train derailment in East Palestine, and the overarching question is, is Sharonville ready for that? Does Sharonville train for those things? So after 33 years in the fire service, there's some words that you'll never hear come out of my mouth, and those words are always and never. So, but what I can tell you is that we do routinely train on hazardous material responses. In just the last six months, we've had two major trainings at the fire department. One was a large vessel training specifically to deal with the semi trucks that run up and down the interstate and train cars. And then more recently, we had a hazardous material IQ class, which deals with identification and mitigation. And again, that's part of that collaboration with the Greater Cincinnati Hazmat Unit. That's how we're able to get those classes into our building. So not only are we able to instruct our own people, but we have outside agencies coming in. And that's really where those relationships that are made that are so important, if we ever do have to deal with something, to a scale of what we saw in East Palestine. We do also train with the railroad, so most of our staff members, I know we have some new ones that we just saw tonight, have, you know, been in the rail yard, have talked to the people who are actually working the railroad. And again, you know, as important as the training is, it's the ability that we have a name and a face, and who are we going to see at three o'clock in the morning should the unthinkable happen? So as I said, while you're not going to hear me say the words always and never, I can tell you that I feel confident that the Sharonville Fire Department has trained that our response would be as good as possible should we have such a large event. I'm suspecting there's other questions, and again, I'm happy to stick around after council. I know a lot of people have a lot of questions about that particular incident. And the last of, or excuse me, second last of our county resources, I did just want to give a shout out to Lieutenant Dan Runyon. In 2022, he finished his 10th year with the Hamilton County SWAT team as a SWAT medic. He did receive a letter of commendation from that team. That's a huge commitment for Dan, and to take that on for 10 years is a big deal, so I'd like to congratulate Dan on that. Our next county resource that we're going to talk about is the Hamilton County Investigation Team. So again, this is a countywide agency. Battalion Chief Chris Ellis is actually now the captain of this team, and these are the people that come out after the fire and determine cause and origin. So, you know, having Chris as a captain on that team really benefits us here in Sharonville. We do need those investigators. They show up very quickly, and obviously, we know the names and the faces. So our favorite battalion chief and fire investigator is on the right there. That would be the furry one. Everybody's good friend Sonnet. Sonnet had 32 deployments in 2022, and of those 32, 16 pieces of evidence were collected. So what that means is that Sonnet hit on something that indicated that there was a flammable liquid involved. So Sonnet has had a very good year, and as has the Hamilton County Fire Investigation Unit. Next, I'd like to talk about our Community Risk Reduction Division, and this is really what we have grown what previously was the Inspection Division into. And this is where we have brought Keith Becker, the Fire Marshal, and Wendy Walters, EMS Coordinator, together in the same office. Wendy's only been with us for about six months, and this relationship between those two and having them in the same office and under one umbrella, I think has proven very beneficial, and I truly look forward to watching that division mature as Wendy gets some more time under her belt with the City of Sharonville. Just a couple of things I want to point out here. The, so the fire prevention side of that had about a little over 2,700 business contacts in 2022. And that can be anything from a very simple fire inspection up to fire extinguisher training. That division does go out and they do fire extinguisher training. They'll do fire drills with area businesses, help with escape plans, those sorts of things. What, you know, Keith has really focused on is more of a collaborative relationship with our businesses to ultimately help keep them safe. As we like to say, help them keep the cash registers ringing, you know, should they have a fire or any sort of event, their cash registers aren't ringing anymore. So Keith has really taken that on as being a collaborator versus walking in and writing up fire code violations, and it has been very successful. The other thing I would like to point out here is we were approached by the VFW 4369, the local VFW post here, about six or seven months ago, wanting to get more involved in the community, and what can they do to help. And what they did is offered up a donation that allowed us to purchase 25 additional residential Knox boxes. Those are the lock boxes that we can put on residents' homes, so that if they do need service from EMS or fire, we're able to use a key to access the key to their home, get in to help them without damaging any doors. So thanks to the VFW, we have 25 additional customers that we can serve who have that need for the Knox box. Continuing on with the community risk reduction, you all did meet Wendy several council meetings ago. She is fulfilling the position of EMS Coordinator. Again, this is what previously we knew as the rain nurse. So Wendy is an RN, and she is also a paramedic, so she, her job duties are different than what we knew as the rain nurse. Wendy does continue to serve the senior group. She meets with them every Monday, and those seniors that do need any extra help at their home, she does do home visits, and, you know, can help with anything from getting their medications together to getting them hooked up with additional resources, whether that be meals on wheels or physical therapy, things like that. I, you know, and she also has taken on the role of teaching our community CPR classes and is working on restructuring that a little bit, so that we have classes at a more designated time on a designated day. Hopefully, then, the community members that want to do that CPR training can plan and be at the firehouse. So she's made a lot of good improvements for us there with the community. On the fire department side, the EMS coordination part of this is she does a lot of our teaching, so that our paramedics can keep up their continuing education requirements. Those requirements come from the state of Ohio, and we have had vast changes late '22, and obviously, those changes are moving into 2023. Wendy's done a great job keeping track of all that, making sure that we continue the certification of all of our paramedics and EMTs. So Keith and Wendy together make our Community Risk Reduction Division and have done a great job with it. I'd like to talk about Can You Take the Heat in 2022. That was the fourth year for that program. At that bottom picture up front, you'll see Lieutenant Castile. She makes this happen. Just as a reminder that Can You Take the Heat, specifically, this group reaches out to young women that want to be in the fire service, all the way, as young as age 12, all the way up to the age of 18. Bring them into Scarlet Oaks for a day, get them fitted in turnout gear, get them in an SCBA and a mask, and they climb some ladders, and they do some search, and they learn some EMT or some EMS skills. And it really has been a huge hit. There is a waiting list every year for this. They had 41 participants in 2022, and I know that they had others on the waiting list. So this has been a huge success. They were recognized in 2022 by FEMA for this program, and, you know, I said it last year, and I'll say it again this year, you know, everybody's heard me talk about recruiting and retention and how difficult it is. And, you know, here is a group of our firefighters that have really taken that bull by the horn and doing what they can for recruitment and retention. We had another good year at the Fight for the Air Climb in 2022. That's where 11 of us from the Sharonville Fire Department, which is very good showing countywide the fact that we had 11 from one department there, had the joy of climbing 1,200 steps in our turnout gear and SCBAs at the Great American Ballpark. And we are going to do it all over again in April of this year. So notice, I didn't say I'm looking forward to doing it again in April of 2023. I just said I will be there again in 2023. So we had a great showing. It really is great team building, and, you know, everybody enjoys it, not only the actual event, but the buildup and getting ready for it has been really good for our department. So I appreciate everybody who takes part in that. All right, so we'll get to some run numbers here, and you'll see that our EMS volume did increase by about 3% in 2022 over '21. Just a couple of points I want to hit on our charts here. I think the first is if we go to the very bottom, that bottom chart, if we look from 2018 to 2022, I think that really gives the biggest show of what is happening to our run volume. So from '18 to '22, we're up almost 2,000 runs. So our volume does continue to increase. I think it's interesting looking at it on that chart, looking at that dip that we had in 2020, obviously, in COVID season, but our volume quickly ramped back up then in '21 and continued up just a little bit in '22. The two other things I want to call attention there is our EMS assists account for about 45% of our fire runs. I do get that question, not only from citizens occasionally, from council administration, is, you know, why are we sending those fire trucks on EMS runs? We have four people at the station on duty at any given time. Occasionally, we have three at Station 88, and that engine will roll out on certain dispatches. It sounds like a serious run, or a patient that's going to need more care than the two on the ambulance can provide. Additionally, they might be called out by the EMS crew if they arrive on scene and need help, you know, handling, moving patients, packaging, or frankly, if the patient is more sick than was initially indicated on dispatch. So that's why we will roll our fire crews on about half of our EMS runs. And the only other thing I want to call attention to on this is we made about 360 mutual aid runs, and that's about normal for us. What I'd like to point out on this is Hamilton County Mutual Aid, countywide, has been around for a very long time. I do want to give a shout out to Battalion Chief Brian Burns. He's really worked with a lot of our valley departments, our closer departments, has attended a lot of meetings, and has done some training with our command structure, not only in Sharonville, but with some of these outside departments, and it has really helped all of those departments that come together for large events, you know, speak the same language, think about the same strategy and tactics, and it really helps us know what we're doing with each other. You know, just as in Sharonville, anytime we've had an actual structure fire, you're seeing Evendale and Blue Ash fire trucks show up. And then obviously, the reverse is true, and we're able to do together what no one of those departments could do by themselves. So that we can do by themselves. So, that, that we continue to build that mutual aid, continue to build So, to end, I want to talk about a message from the chief just for a minute. Samantha was a huge help in putting this report together. More than once, I walked past her desk and said, "All right, I'm going to go sit at my computer and come up with a message from the chief, and, and, you know, what am I going to sit here and type to really encompass? What has Sharonville Fire Department accomplished in 2022, and who are we as an organization?" And it hit me, driving into work one morning, that I really, that message was already given to me, and it's nothing that I could type on a computer. One evening, just a couple of months ago, I was leaving the firehouse particularly late, and as I was walking out of the firehouse, all the crews were out on a run. There was an elderly gentleman walking into the firehouse. I could tell by his hat that he was a veteran. And I'm always glad to see our veterans, especially those who served a long time ago, always enjoy talking to them. And he approached me, and I greeted him, and he said, "I'm looking for the fire chief." And I said, "Well, you're in luck. Here I am, and good for me, too, because I like talking to our veterans." So, this gentleman proceeded to tell me that his wife had recently passed away. She had been in hospice care at home for about six months. In the course of that six-month period, he called for Sharonville EMS forty-one times. And he was very appreciative that because of that help that he was getting from Sharonville EMS, that she was able to stay at home, felt dignified, felt like he was able to take care of her. And I gave him my condolences and, you know, told him I appreciate him stopping by and, you know, letting us know what's going on. And he said, "No, chief," he says, "you don't understand. That's not why I'm here." He said, "I'm here to let you know that all forty-one of those runs were important to your people. Of course, they were important to me, but they were important to your people." He said, "I don't know how many runs they make in a day. I don't know if it's one. I don't know if it's a hundred, but I can tell you when they were at my house, taking care of my wife, that was the most important thing they had to do that day, and they made us feel that way forty-one times in six months." So, that's the men and women standing behind me. I truly appreciate everything they do for the fire department and for the citizens of Sharonville. And with that, I am happy to take any questions.
Anyone?
I, again, want to, Wendy comes to our senior meeting every meeting. When she first started coming, only two or three would get their blood pressures checked, but now everyone except myself gets...
She has to come with her.
But I've noticed a lot more, and she writes, she has sheets that she writes. They have little papers so they can compare. We've had a couple of our ladies had a little issues, and they caught on, right, called the squad, and they came. And I just want to thank Wendy and the, the firefighters that come on the days that she can't make it. It's, it means a lot to them, and that's our citizens, our senior citizens. Thank you.
Anyone else? Mr. Tankerson?
Chief, along with you, five men and women back here up against the wall. I just want to say you all do an outstanding job. There's been a lot of changes over the years. There's still a few that I know, but I commend you with your leadership and the changes that have occurred since your tenure. And again, I want to congratulate you guys, you men and women back here in the back also for the job that you do also. And I'm grateful that we have a good department as we do. I just want to say thank you.
Anyone else? Thank you guys so much for all you do.
Thank you. Thank you, Terry, for making the AV work. Appreciate it.
Yes. Yes, Mike?
If you want to ask a question, Mike, go right ahead.
Every member of our fire department is trained, some to, some to higher degrees than others. So, within the hazardous material realm, all the way from operations to technicians. So, we do have a variety within the fire department, but every, everybody has been trained to some level. As I said, some higher than others. And going back to the hazardous material response team that is countywide, that is where we have those resources available if we do need more people who are more technical with the hazardous material, as I said, all the way up to PhDs that, that make the handle. Does the city have any idea how much hazardous waste comes through this video on a monthly variable issue? We have a pretty good handle on the type that comes via train. And again, that is thanks to the fact that the hazmat building is in Sharonville. That's been a blessing for us. The director of that facility will frequently let us know what material is coming through and what quantities and what frequencies. And we do, similar to the interstate, and that is more a matter of, you know, when we are, we are out on the interstate for any type of response, that's something that we're always looking for. Does the fire department, which has a hazardous waste program, a per handling into the program, that's important? On, I, I, I'm going to answer that in two ways. So, the fire department does have a standard operating procedure for how we handle hazardous material events within the fire department. I'm assuming then you're also speaking to how would we notify? I was asking if there's a communication section for businesses and citizens. Yeah, so that is part of the Code Red program that I believe is on the website, is, is on the website, the City of Sharonville website, and that's how we would notify residents and businesses. Do you have a work relationship with the training companies as well? So, we do, and again, unfortunately, all things COVID have slowed things down. About every other year, we are in the train yards, in the Sharon yards with employees from the railroad, training on, you know, various safety aspects of the train, obviously up to including hazardous material waste. So, we're actually trying to get that coordinated here again for twenty-three or twenty-four as that, that program is spinning back.
Thank you, chief. Thank you all for coming tonight. Now, I guess you get ice cream and cake?
Yes.
Dan? Oh, he's not taking the strawberry shortcake. Were you finished, Kevin? Okay. We'll move on now to our Safety Service Director, Mr. Lucas.
Thank you. Only the legislation this evening, Dan touched on during his report, the trained around, and I asked him to talk about that a little bit tonight. During the comment section, he said he was going to handle that during his report, and the mayor mentioned the Masala Road issue. So, just legislation this evening, there are seven items on the agenda up for consideration. The first one, ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash zero seven, was the subject of the public hearing this evening about the rezoning. Resolution two thousand twenty-three R zero one, Michael Blommer was here a meeting or two ago to talk about his grant request to replace the dinosaur structure at, at Gower Park. If you recall, that conversation is about a forty-five thousand dollar piece of equipment that he's going to be applying to, for a grant for. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three thirteen E deals with Mallard Cove and landscaping requirements out in front of that facility. Just to expiate, John's here to talk about that briefly, but if you want to add anything, John, please do so. But Mallard Cove has an agreement with us to maintain landscaping in front of their facility during, in the right of way. That building was recently sold to a new entity, so we have to consent to that same relationship with the new entity, and that's all that this legislation does. John, do you want to add anything? Ordinance two thousand twenty-two dash fourteen E is a simple purchase of radios and turnout gear for the fire department. These were both approved in the budget, but because they are both over twenty-five thousand dollars, it requires a separate ordinance, and that's what this is in front of you this evening. Ordinance two thousand twenty-three dash fifteen E and sixteen, or I'm sorry, fifteen is a, that should be, oh, it's a financial, I'm sorry, and sixteen E are both police and finance related. Scott and Chief Nesbit are here to talk about both of those.
Good evening. I'll touch on ordinance fifteen. This is a request for appropriations in three funds. In the two, two-ten fund, this is the law enforcement trust fund. We are requesting twelve thousand dollars for some software to do some different records management in the police department. The two-twenty-three, that's the CPT Fund, continuing professional training. The, the police department is requesting eighteen thousand dollars to do some additional training. And in the four-oh-one capital fund, request of seventy-four thousand two fifty, this is for, to kind of, this flock safety that was kind of discussed in the twenty-twenty-two budget. Those appropriations expire to year end, and we need to get those kind of re-appropriated. So, any detailed questions chief can discuss along with ordinance sixteen?
Are there any questions from anyone? Thank you.
Did they, did you guys talk about sixteen as well?
Oh, you're going on sixteen.
So, sixteen is appropriations for things that were in the budget already?
Yes.
All right. So, with that, we're purchasing some cop cars to replace some worn-out cop cars, and we are also accessing some special funds to purchase a second police car to kind of offset the burden on the, the general fund or the, the capital fund. We are accessing special funds that come through Caesar's, and that's funding one of the police cars.
Are there any questions regarding that? Thank you, sir.
And then finally, ordinance two thousand twenty-three seventeen E. If you recall, we applied to Sorda for some grant funding last year. We received about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars to repave our Kemper Road path and do some minor crossing improvements for the, for the bus system. This legislation gives me the authority to sign the agreement with Sorda, and the signing ceremony is the first week in March. So, that's why that's an emergency this evening. And that's it.
Are there any questions? Seeing none. My report tonight, I just wanted to say happy birthday to half you council people between February and March. I think that kind of takes care of a lot of our birthdays. Happy birthday. There's still strawberry shortcake over there and cookies. Please help yourselves. And make sure you let Terry or Anna know if you're going to be there on the eighth, and that does start at eight-thirty. So, just let her know. Clerk of Council, Mrs. Buhy.
Thanks. Just wanted to say that I completed the public records training that is required by the ORC one oh nine point forty-three, and I completed that on February sixteenth of twenty twenty-three as designees for all of the elected.
Thank you. Auditor, Mr. Cunningham.
Good evening, everybody. We are roughly eight percent through the year. We've spent roughly six percent of our budget, so we're in good shape here, there thus far. There was one transfer, or not transfer, but advance that needs to be mentioned. That is an advance from fire to ARPA, which the chief had been talking about our three due fire personnel. We had to make an advance on that so we could pay them until we get reimbursed from that grant.
Perfect.
That's my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to our treasurer, Mr. Irvin.
Good evening. The tax numbers for the first month of two thousand twenty-three showed that the lodging tax is up once again, twenty-one point one-two percent. And for the first time in a long time, I'm reporting that the tax receipts actually year-to-date or year-over-year are just down a slight amount, only thirty thousand down from the twenty-twenty-two numbers. So, nothing, nothing to worry about. The tax receipts are still very strong. And that is all I have to report.
Are there any questions? Seeing none, we'll move to our law director, Mr. Lucker.
Thank you. I do have a couple of things. I would encourage everyone, even though it's only a first reading, to take a look at the text having to do with twenty-twenty-three dash twenty, which is a amendment to chapter one twenty-one of Sharonville codified ordinances. Mrs. Buhy did the lion's share of the work on the amendments that were needed to bring us up to date with the times. Mr. Lucas did a lot of the work, too. We had met a couple of times by phone and in person, and finally came up with a, a good draft to present to Law Committee, and that's how it ended up where it is. But we wanted to give it the full three readings to give everyone a chance to review it. We think it's good, but if there's something else that you guys think should be there, we want to know about it before we vote on it. The other thing I would mention is that I also did the public records training, so, because it's probably important for me, just because I get a lot of those questions, too. That's all I have. Thank you.
Now's an opportunity. Anyone from other residents want to be heard this evening? Come on up, give us your name and your address, please. Not that we don't all know you, but...
Amy Sharp, Cher, four one seven three Stone Creek Way. Good evening, council. I'm here on behalf of the Sharonville Sharks Swim Team. I'm the president. This is my seventh year as president, ninth in a, in a leadership capacity. I just want to give a quick update on the success of our swim team. We've had a lot of our alumni be quite successful in the, high school just had their state championships. We had a, one of our ninth graders on the swim team, Malia Ekman. She qualified, she attends Ursuline Academy. She qualified to swim in the fifty-three and the one hundred free, and she placed eleventh in the fifty and seventeenth in the one hundred respectively. We had a senior, Sean Schweller. He attends Saint Xavier High School. He competed in the one hundred breast respectively. Then, on to our alum, Sharks alum, we have Kellum Roddy. He's a junior at John Hopkins, swimming for them. He qualified in the NCAA. They're a Division III school. He qualified to swim in the five hundred, the sixteen fifty, and the eight hundred relay. John Hopkins will compete. Their championships will be March fifteenth through the eighteenth, so we're excited for him. Just a tidbit, he has the second fastest time in the school history in those events.
Oh, wow.
So, that's pretty special. And then Adam Chaney. Adam is a sophomore at the University of Florida. He swims Division One, and they just finished their NCAA tournament. He finished third in the fifty-three, and he finished first in the one hundred back. He has been coined the fastest one hundred back in the country. So, that's pretty, wow. And his four hundred medley relay place first as well. We're looking forward to a wonderful twenty twenty-three swim season. Our enrollment opens March fifteenth, and I just want to take one moment and talk about Michael Blommer. He is such a vital asset to our swim team, such a, he actually helps us so... He is such a vital asset to our swim team, such a, he actually helps us so much and an advocate for our swim team. We have anywhere between 125 to 160 swimmers every summer. We are probably one of the most successful programs at the rec center, and I'm happy to serve the city and the rec center in the capacity that I do. But I couldn't do it without the support of the city and the support of our parents that help us day in and day out. It is a Monday through Friday organization with meets every Tuesday and Thursday. So it's anywhere, it's probably about an eight, eight or nine week program. We start before school lets out, and we end the mid-July. Championships this year will be at St. Bernard, but in 2024, Charreville will be hosting it, and we're super excited for that. Planning has already started for that, and we just thank you for the opportunity that the city affords us, and you guys pay for our coaches, and we have the nicest facility in all of the NSSL league. So thank you.
Thank you for all you do. Anyone else wish to be heard this evening? We'll go to our council committees. Community development, Mr. Wilson.
Yes. March the 8th, at 6:30, we'll have our next meeting of the Planning Commission. There is no Board of Zoning Appeals that night, so the Planning Commission meeting will start at 6:30. There is no old business. Two agenda items on new business. One is for a request for conditional use permit for outdoor dining under tents in the summer and fall, and that comes to us from Third Eye Brewery. And the other is a request to amend and approve the site plan to establish a U-Haul truck leasing operation on Lebanon Road.
Okay. Are there any questions for Mr. Wilson? Seeing none, we'll go to community services, Mr. Lovett.
Thank you. No reports tonight. Our next meeting is also on Wednesday, March 8th, at 4:00 p.m. Thank you.
Busy day. Thank you. Honored citizens, Mrs. Knight.
Thank you. February is American Health Month, at a time where all people can focus on their heart health. I would like to honor all Charrevilleans who focus on their heart health through diet, exercise, and lowering stress. This would also be a great time to check out our rec center's fitness center if you need a little extra exercise.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Law and Public Safety, Mr. Schmidt.
Thank you. The next Law and Public Safety Committee meeting will be on Tuesday, March 7th, 4:00 p.m., Administrative Conference Room. Thank you.
Thank you. Rule suspension motion first and only reading with immediate effectivity for ordinances 2023 13E, 2023 14E, 2023 15, 2023 16E, and 2023 17E. Is there a motion? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mr. Lovett. Any discussion? All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And that does carry unfinished business.
Third reading of ordinance 2023-07, rezoning property located along the north side of Hawk Road and along the east side of Runyon Drive from general business to planned unit development, and approving the preliminary site development plan.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023-07? So moved by Mr. Wilson, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-07 has been approved. Third reading of Resolution 2023 R01, resolution authorizing the Safety Service Director to submit an application for a nature works grant through the Ohio Department of Natural Resources.
Is there a motion to pass Resolution 2023 R01? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Resolution 2023 R01 has been approved.
New business, please.
Sorry. Looking for my agenda.
You can find here.
Thanks, I forget which one's not there. Okay. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023 13E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to give written consent to the assignment of a landscape easement and maintenance agreement to Cincinnati RP SNF LLC.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023 13E? So moved by Mr. Coulter, second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023 13E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023 14E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of radios and turnout gear for the fire department and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023 14E? So moved by Mr. Lovett, second by Mrs. Knight. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt. Emergency ordinance 2023 14E has been approved. First and only reading of ordinance 2023 15E, amending 2023 appropriations for various funds.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023 15? So moved by Mr. Coulter, second by Mr. Schmidt. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Ordinance 2023 15, 15, no E, has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023 16E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to enter into a contract for the purchase of body worn camera equipment and motor vehicles for the police department and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023 16E? So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Wilson. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023 16E has been approved. First and only reading of emergency ordinance 2023 17E, authorizing the Safety Service Director to sign an agreement with Sorda, enter into a contract for design services, and enter into a contract for construction regarding the repaving of the asphalt path on Kemper Road and declaring an emergency.
Is there a motion to pass ordinance 2023 17E? So moved by Mr. Schmidt, second by Mr. Lovett. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Mr. Tankersley.
Yes.
Mr. Wilson.
Yes.
Mr. Coulter.
Yes.
Mr. Lovett.
Yes.
Mrs. Knight.
Yes.
And Mr. Schmidt.
Yes.
Emergency ordinance 2023 17E has been approved. Just a first reading of emergency ordinance 2023 18E, accepting opioid settlement funds and declaring an emergency. First reading of ordinance 2023 19, establishing a policy for the repair or replacement of resident mailboxes damaged by city snowplow operations. Yeah, sorry. First reading of ordinance 2023 20, amending Chapter 121 of the Charreville Codified Ordinances regarding council procedure.
Thank you.
Sure, thank you.
We should rename that to the Terry ordinance, but.
Good.
Terry ordinance? Yeah, can we just say the Terry ordinance?
That's too boring. I'd rather it be something else.
All right. Another opportunity for residents to wish to be heard this evening. Anyone want to come up? Seeing none. Are there any other matters to be heard before council this evening? Mrs. Knight.
Yes, the root beer stand opens Saturday, March 4th, at 11 o'clock.
Good deal. Thank you. Anyone else? Mr. Coulter.
I had the pleasure of being invited for the second year in a row to be a judge at the Charreville United Methodist Chili Cook-Off.
Yes.
It was very well attended, a lot of good chilies there. But the best part was the individuals who showed up to taste all the chilies, and they voted with their dollars. And this year, all the dollars went to the Princeton Closet, and they raised over $1,000 for the Princeton Closet through those donations.
Oh, how exciting.
So it was a great event, great chili. Next year, sorry?
Who won?
10, 11, and 7.
Okay.
That's who the judges voted for, but.
Okay. That's okay. That's good. Thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else? Mr. Wilson.
Yes. First of all, the Princeton concert, Princeton High School concert series is starting to come around, including tonight was the first concert. They had for the band, so we're doing our duty here and didn't get to see that one. But the next couple of Thursdays, you get to see the choral concert, and then also the orchestra concert. I really, I really would like for people to give that a try. It's free to the public, and they are incredibly good.
They're gearing up for their competition season, I believe, right now.
I believe they are.
So it's good to go support them.
It is. And you'll be, I promise you, you will have great entertainment there. And then also, our Lady Vikings basketball team is probably very near the end of their regional tournament game with Mason tonight, so send positive thoughts that way in case we need a last second shot.
I was going to say, you don't have the score?
I don't know. I've been good.
You're slacking.
I've been good, so, yep.
All right. Anyone else?
Just as an update, Stephen Casto, who is not a Charreville resident, but right outside of Charreville, his kids go to Stewart Elementary, was the winner based on the judges, Melissa Subit and Steve Subit, who are both very involved with the Fine Arts Center.
Yes.
And the work that they do down there. In fact, I think Steve is currently the president of the Cultural Arts Center Fund, came in second and third place. Now, that's just the judges. There was a People's Choice Award where people voted with their money, and so the winner of that was a young man by the name of Camden Casto, who is a fifth grader, I believe, who made a delicious chocolate chili. And then tied for second place in the People's Choice Awards was a woman by the name of Amy Goz Hardman, not quite sure who she is.
I don't know her.
And another gentleman by the name of Eric Head, who is a Charreville resident. So those were the winners that won by the amount of money that came into their jars.
Oh, that's fun.
As opposed to the culinary taste of people like Mr. Coulter and Joe Cicado, who is the owner of Angelo's Pizza, was also one of our three judges for the evening.
What a wonderful.
It was a great event, and the community's always invited to that event.
What a wonderful event. Anyone else? All right. Is there a motion for adjournment? So moved by Mr. Tankersley, second by Mr. Wilson. All those in favor, yes?
Yes.
Those opposed, no. And we do stand adjourned. Thank you all for coming. Grab some cookies and stuff.